Anunpa sa Watawatang Pilipinas. Ako ay Pilipino. Buong katapangan anunpa sa Watawatang Pilipinas at sa bansa kanyang sinasagisag na may dangal, katarungan at kalayaan na pinakikilos sa sambal nayang mga kayos, makatao, makakalikasan at makabansa.
Secretary, mayroon po please.
Under First District, Honorable Alfonso Huzon, Honorable Junisio, Honorable Fajardo, Honorable Liam Moises, Honorable Nueva and Honorable Ong. Under Second District, Honorable Benaventura Kimpo, Honorable Laxson, Honorable Liam Numero, Honorable Robles Dalus, Honorable Sia and Honorable Tan Edward. Under Third District, Honorable Ali Barbar, Honorable Chua Joel, Honorable Fugoso Pasqual, Honorable Isip Ernesto Jr., Honorable Nieto Rodriguez and Honorable Zarkal. Under Fourth District, Honorable Bacani, Honorable Bagatzing, Honorable Chua Luisito, Honorable Quintos, Honorable Reyes and Honorable Villanueva. Under Fifth District, Honorable Bermejo, Honorable Hison, Honorable Isip Ricardo Jr., Honorable Ortega, Honorable Tien and Honorable Yopanco. Under Sixth District, Honorable Abante Barquia, Honorable Castaneda, Honorable Lacuna, Salvador Philip, Honorable Par, Honorable Uwi and Honorable Veloso. Ex-official members, Honorable Lacuna Leila Ni Marie and Honorable Tan Dinhil Day. Your Honor, as of 10:44 in the morning, there are twenty-eight members present for this regular session.
Twenty-eight members during the first roll call. We have a call room much the pleasure of the Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, we are now on item number seven. This is for the day for first reading. May I request the Secretary to please read item number one.
Mr. Secretary.
I am Madam Ma'wan, letter of Mr. Orlando D. Anatram Anatalo, President Pampanga Galamin Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, Pampanga Toda Incorporated, requesting for accreditation as non-government organization as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number one to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs and POs.
There is a motion to refer item number one to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs and POs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
Item number two, a letter of Mr. Ryan N. Laxina, President NWAO ng Manila Trike Association, Manila Trike Incorporated, requesting for accreditation as non-government organization as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number two to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs and POs.
There is a motion to refer item number two to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs and POs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
Item number three, a letter of Reverend Father Enrico Martin F. Adoviso, Acting Minister, Ministry of Public Affairs of the Archdiocese of Manila, Caritas Manila Incorporated, requesting for accreditation as non-government organization as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number three to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs and POs.
There is a motion to refer item number three to the Committee on Cooperatives, NGOs and POs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
Item number four, a letter of Punong Barangay Pedrito Nilayan of Barangay 322, Zone 32, District 3, Manila, relative to a letter complaint of SK Chairman Mr. Brian Ral L. Untalan of Barangay 569, Zone 56, District 4, Manila, against SK Chairman Patrick D. Villanueva of Barangay 322, Zone 32, District 3, Manila for appropriate action as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number four to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There is a motion to refer item number four to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
Item number five, a letter of Attorney Pilarita Tilakito, Assistant Envoyman Popper, relative to complaint of Mr. Michael D. Maravillas of 4026 AK Magcaysay D. Mapa, Santa Mesa, Manila, against Punong Barangay Alan Unarce of Barangay 587, Zone 58, District 6, Manila for appropriate action as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number five to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There is a motion to refer item number five to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
Item number six, a letter of Punong Barangay Alfred S. Montemayor of Barangay 806, Zone 87, District 5, Manila, relative to his complaint against Barangay Kagawad Victor M. Salvador and Barangay Kagawad Mary Ann El Nones of the same barangay for appropriate action as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number six to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There is a motion to refer item number six to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
Item number seven, a letter of Punong Barangay Indelencio S. Junisio of Barangay 49, Zone 4, District 1, Manila, relative to the barangay resolution number 15, series of 2019 entitled "Formulation of Service: Clearance Fees Matrix to Accumulate Funds for the Benefit of barangay 49, Zone 4, District 1 Constituents", requesting for review as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number seven to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There is a motion to refer item number seven to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried. Next.
And item number eight, a letter of Punong Barangay Indelencio S. Junisio of Barangay 49, Zone 4, District 1, Manila, relative to their barangay ordinance number eight, series of 2019 entitled "An Ordinance Imposing Fees and Charges on Individual barangay Clearance, barangay Business Clearance and Other Services Offered by This barangay Pursuant to the Provisions of the Local Government Code, Republic Act 7160, and Providing Penalty for Violations thereof", requesting for review as per basic papers.
Your Honor, I move that we refer item number eight to the Committee on Barangay Affairs.
There is a motion to refer item number eight to the Committee on Barangay Affairs. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried.
Your Honor, before we continue, before we proceed to item number nine for second reading, may I request the Honorable Chairman to please recognize the Honorable Counselor from the Fourth District, Don Juan Bagatzing for his personal and collective privilege.
Counselor Don Juan Bagatzing, you have the floor.
Uh, DJ lang po, Your Honor. But thank you, I rise on the matter of personal and collective privilege. Dahil uh, it has come to the attention of this humble representation, Your Honor, that over the past weeks or in this new year, new year of 2020, there have been some seismic shifts in realignment and uh, in affiliation. And uh, it has come to my attention, Your Honor, that uh... Tayo nalang po ang uh, hindi pa nag uh, ma-manifest. Ang totoong rason po niyan is dahil inantay ko 'yung live feed ng... Ang totoong...
Tapos ba niyan?
Hindi, hindi po. Ang totoo po niyan is I wanted to manifest, Your Honor, in front of our presiding officer, the Vice Mayor, and in front of our Majority Leader, uh, Honorable Chua. But balita ko po na lahat ko na nandito ay nagsabi na na magsama-sama. At uh, ang sabihan, kasabihan na eh, sana all, di ba?
Sana oil.
Sana oil. At uh, there's also a saying, Your Honor, that uh, there's a saying that says, "It goes without saying." It tatagalo ko po, "Huliman at magaling."
Huli parin.
Yan si Bagatzing. Ibig sabihin ko nun, this humble representation has been in this city council under three mayorships, Your Honor. But this present mayorship is where this humble representation sees a common vision and a leadership that is consultative and a leader or mayor that shares uh, knowledge and imparts expertise and knowledge to our fellow counselors because we are led by the first woman Vice Mayor of the city. Now, be that the city, Your Honor. Kumbaga, si DJ Bagatzing po ng Distrito IV ay nagpe-pledge ng loyalty kay Coist at kay Niha. Tatanong niya nun, anong ibig sabihin nun, DJ? Ang ibig sabihin nun, kay Isco at Honey. Si DJ Bagatzing. So with that, Your Honor, on the record, with the indulgence of my colleagues and our leaders, if I may be allowed to be a member of the majority coalition, Your Honor, under the leadership of Mary Isco Moreno and Honey Lacuna and Joel Chua. Thank you, Your Honor.
Please take note of the manifestation of Counselor Don Juan Bagatzing.
Your Honor, uh...
Minority Floor Leader Salvador Philip Lacuna.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Would the Honorable Gentleman from the Fourth District of uh, Sampaol be allowed to be interpolated, Your Honor?
Counselor Don Juan?
Uh, of course, Your Honor, but if I can just ask, if everybody manifested, it was also interpolated?
Special po kayo.
In that case, I shall uh...
Kasi gusto mo solo ka eh, di solo ka ngayon?
Hindi, nag-koincidence lang na nagka-camera tapos nagmanifest ako eh. But I will indulge the Honorable Philip Lacuna yon.
Counselor Salvador Philip Lacuna, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. Uh, I would only like to ask the Gentleman from the Fourth District, uh, if he is indeed joining the majority block in which I am not part of because I'm from the minority, I'd just like to ask, uh, from what political party does the Counselor from the Fourth District of Manila belong to? And if ever there would be an oath-taking of new uh, of new members of certain parties in the city of Manila, would the good Counselor from the Fourth District also take his oath of loyalty to that said party, Your Honor?
Counselor Don Juan?
Your Honor, napagagaling po Honorable Lacuna. Nakalimutan mo sabihin yon eh. I had a question kanina, I wanted to ask, kailan po 'yung oath-taking? Kasi sabi...
Anong partido? Anong partido muna?
Asensumanileño.
Ah, okay.
God first, Asensumanileño. I will oath-taking, if it's tomorrow, I will do it tomorrow, Your Honor.
Hindi ka mag-aabsente? Ano bang partido niyo?
Dati, kailan pa bang ano yan? Nakaroon eh, with bygones be bygones. I mean... Asensumanileño, Your Honor.
Madam Chair, another question, isa lang po.
Sige pa, pang si Joel Chua.
Thank you. Assuming Your Honor for the sake of argument, come 2022, one of his relatives happens to be our opponent and uh, the Honorable Gentleman from the Fourth District, as a new member of our party, eh, Asensumanileño, is he going to join his relative or again abandon the Honorable uh, Mayor? Or uh, will he stick to our party?
Yan ang napapalaan ng ano eh. Gusto pa...
Your Honor, may kasabihan, you cannot choose your relatives...
Live na?
Yes. You cannot choose your relatives, Your Honor. But I believe that uh, Mayor Isco and Vice Mayor Honey, they have already slain all the potential uh, Vice Mayorabos or Mayorabos which can fall in the category of a certain relative of mine. But remember, I am the son of an ambassador who has no more uh, ambition, Your Honor. And my older brother would want to also pledge loyalty to Coist and Niha if he's be allowed. And I think the Honorable Vice Mayor has already seen the, the, how do you call it? The gestures of my older brother. But to answer the question of the Majority Leader, I will stick and you will feel the lackeit of the pumbar when I stick with you through thick and thin in 2022 when Mayor Isco and Vice Mayor Honey will be overwhelmingly re-elected with another mandate to lead the city of Manila. Live po yan.
Please take note of the manifestation ano horas na 10:57, January 23 of Counselor Don Juan, DJ Bagatzing? Ano po ang apihi dun niyo ngayon?
Lacuna dash dumukod. Dash dumukod, so... But Your Honor, we give, I hate that this humble representation be given a slut in the powerful lineup of uh, the public servants of Asensumanileño God First Coalition, Your Honor.
Depende yan, roast beef?
Pwede pwede.
Pwede?
Your Honor, anyway, um, the Honorable Gentleman is just confirming what the former Minority Floor Leader, Counselor Junisio manifested a week or two weeks ago, or three weeks ago?
Two weeks ago.
Or two, uh, two weeks ago that the Honorable Gentleman um, to join the majority block.
Thank you, Counselor Don Juan.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Chey Bagatzing.
I love you all.
With that, Mr. Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you. We will continue with our agenda, Your Honor. For, we are now on item number nine for second reading. The proposed ordinance prohibiting non-compliance with the mandatory basic immunization program for infants and children in the city of Manila imposing penalties for violation thereof. Your Honor, may I request the Secretary to please read the content of the of the report of the Committee on Health.
Before we continue, uh, I think the principal offer is not yet around so you might want to defer the said second reading. Honorable Dr. Louie Chua is not yet around.
I withdraw my previous motion, Your Honor. Uh, instead, Your Honor, I move that we defer or we tackle item number nine once the principal author arrive.
There is a motion to defer item number nine until...
With the arrival, Your Honor, of the principal author, uh...
Nakahinga ka na, Dr. Louis. Pwede ka na mag-defend?
I would like to reinstate my previous motion for the Secretary to please read the report of the Committee on Health.
Mr. Secretary.
Upon the perusal of the proposed measure at hand, the committee has determined its main intent of ensuring public acclistance in relation to the city government's compulsory immunization program for infants and children. It was noted, as the proponent propounded, that parents and other elders having custody of newborn and qualified children have assumed the right to choose between submitting their young to vaccination and refusal to do so despite the mandate of Republic Act number 10152. The law does not recognize any such right, but at the same time, it disstands with the imposition of a penal clause. Consequently, it now provides for some justification to involve denial or refusal to bring children for the administration of disease-preventable vaccines. In turn, the absence of vaccine serves as one main cause for children to be left vulnerable to a line of debilitating and even life-threatening diseases. The city of Manila bears no exemption as its experienced disease outbreaks that could have been prevented had the law imposed a penalty as a deterrent. Thus, there emerges a need to provide penal provision that can be carried out within the city's territorial jurisdiction. In this light, merit is seen. In view of the foregoing, the committee interposes no objection and finds justification to recommend the approval of the proposed ordinance for second reading without prejudice to comments and recommendations that the committee laws may submit. The Committee on Law has also submitted its report, which reads as follows, "After due deliberation and perusal of the existing ordinance and other necessary documents, the committee interposes no objection or opposition to the approval of said ordinance. It therefore recommends that the proposed draft ordinance number 8022 be submitted for second reading for further deliberations by the city council in its plenary session."
Your Honor, may I request the principal author, the Honorable Counselor from the Fourth District, Counselor Luisito and Chua be recognized by the chair.
Counselor Dr. Louis Chua, you have the floor.
Hello. Thank you, Your Honor. I stand before you in this August chamber and with me, this proposed measure aim at imposing full compliance with our country's immunization program, which is compulsory for infants and children. At first glance, the proposed the proposed measure may be seen as just a iteration of Republic Act number 10152 and therefore may be interpreted as duplicity. Indeed, RA 10152 is a very law that our city government is implementing towards the immunization of our children so that they are protected against disease contaminations that are vaccine-preventable. However, it was noted that the same law does not provide for any penal clause that would have served as a deterrent against non-conformity when it triple its predecessor, PD 996. As long as there is no penal provision, we now have a situation where in parents and other elders with children in their custody may continue to disregard and defy the mandate of the law, leaving their children's health and safety to no more than mere chance. It would be a case of negligence on the part of parents and other elders to disregard preventive measures aimed at their children's protection. But worse, it would also be negligent on our part should we choose not to act. It is true that there were issues that posed a social concern. For instance, some health centers showed expired vaccines in their stocks which caused parents not to involve their children anymore. Another is the controversial dense vaccine that claimed the lives of about two children and threatened others, which presented the issue whether our government immunization program can be trusted. But the point still remains, mistakes may have been committed in the past, but I'm confident that they are resolved. We still have the statutory obligation to provide protection for our children with new provisions and a penal provisions through these proposed measures. What I wish to appeal is Your Honor's occurrence, concurrence and support. Maraming salamat po. Pero binabati ko muna po ang aking kaibigan, si JTB ng happy, happy birthday dahil may ano na taas siya handa eh mamaya. Atsaka 'yung blowout mo sa amin. At uh, sapa, I'm also manifesting my group in minority to be one of the also the principal sponsors. Thank you po.
Please take note of the manifestation of Counselor Doc Luisito Chua.
Your Honor, I move that we open the period of discussion and debate.
There is a motion to open the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? I see non-motion is carried.
Your Honor, may tanong lang po ako.
Counselor Joel Chua.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, gusto ko lang po tanungin ang ating uh, principal sponsor uh, dahil siya naman din po ay isang doctor by profession. Ano po ba ang epekto? Uh, kung ang bata o ang uh, bakit po natin to nirerequire? Ano po ba ang epekto pag sila ay hindi nakapagavail nitong immunization program?
Counselor Chua? Luisito, dalawa kayo, kasi kayong ano eh, Chua eh.
Hello. Uh, Your Honor, pag ito pong mga batang't hindi nagavail ng mga vaccine, uh, pagkatagkasakit nila, let's say a certain sakit, let's say in polio, no? Kasi these are dangerous diseases at madaming effect sa mga bata. Like sa polio, pwedeng lumitang pang, pamaing, everything. And they can die also, like mga diphtheria, delikado yon because the children can die of it.
Miceles.
Miceles, chickenpox, HEPA-B. Kasi nga, katulad ng HEPA-B vaccine, they said the source of liver cancer is uh, this one, lack of uh, HEPA-B vaccine because they said it is one of the causes. As a tao da, pag nakahepa HEPA-B vaccine, it can lead to liver cirrhosis and eventually to liver cancer. So madami pong magiging epekto po talaga pag ang sa bata ay hindi nabakunan. And the problem is, may mga uh, magulang na they are not aware of the risk they have put in their children regarding this, pag hindi sila nabakunahin 'yung mga anak nila. So kailangan talaga din na isamas, kaya kailangan ng penalty if the parents will not comply with it.
Counselor Joel Chua? Ano-ano po ba 'yung mga vaccination na sakop po nitong uh, ordinance nito na irerequire po natin?
Yun bumabagsak po sa EPI.
Una-una, 'yung mga newborn, up to a few months, kailangan nila ng oral polio, kailangan ng DPT, eh, PCG. Yun na muna ang mga required. Then, as they grow older, kailangan na nila ng missile vaccine, ng chickenpox, MMR. Then, as they grow older again, let's say mga one, two, uh, they should have a HEPA-A, HEPA-B vaccine. Yun po ang mga scheduling para sa mga bata.
Normally po, pagka newborn, bagong panganak, kapapanganak pa lamang up to one month, 'yung PCG. 'Yung PCG po, uh, para po laban sa TB, tuberculosis ng bata, okay? Tapos po, pag one and a half months na po, uh, DPT at tsaka oral polio vaccine. Tatlong doses po to every month. So, one and a half months, two and a half months, pag three and a half months. Pagdating po ng six months, measles. Six to nine months pala, measles vaccine. Six to nine months pala, missiles vaccine. Lahat naman po ito libre sa lahat ng ating health centers. Meron po tayo niyan. Tapos po, after a year, 'yung, uh, MMR, tapos, uh, HEPA. Lahat po 'yan, uh, HEPA-A and B.
Saka mga booster doses.
Saka booster doses, lahat po 'yan libre.
So ang kailangan lang po nila sa mga magulang eh magcomply lang po, dalhin 'yung mga anak nila. Dahil ito namam po, eh, sagot namam po ng pamahalaan lokal. Tama po ba?
Tama po.
Opo. Marami salamat po, yun lang po.
Councillor Lou Veloso.
Marami salamat, uh, ginang tagapangunu. Um, alam ko po na kakailanganin ng isang resolusyon or dinansa uh, sa akin pong isusuhistion, kasi napakaraming problema na tumatanda na 'yung mga bata, saka lang nalalaan na walang, uh, birth certificate. So po pwede po ba na sa pagpunta nila sa, sa mga klinika o sa center natin, ay dalahin ang mga birth certificate na sa ganun, ay natutugunan kung, uh, mayron ba o wala ang mga batang ito dahil, uh, pagdaan ng panahon, saka lang nalalaan na wala ka lang birth certificate ang mga kabataan. So sana po ay maidagdag na pagpunta sa, uh, mga center natin, ay dalahin ang, uh, birth certificate na sa ganun ay masigurado na ang mga bata ay merong birth certificate.
Siguro po dun sa unang ano, pwede ho ba yun? Kasi medyo, siguro ibang ordinancea po, Konsihal. Huwag na po nating ilagay pa dito sa ordinancea na ito.
Opo. Uh, siguro po, maidagdag na rin po, uh, kung, kung may tokura, uh, uh, ano ba 'yan? Injection na mangyayari, ay agad na rin, nakuhanin ang blood type ng mga bata na sa ganun, isahang, uh, ano na rin, nang may record na sila.
Please take note of the manifestation of councillor Lou Veloso. Councillor Priscilla Marie Abante Barquilla.
Marami salamat po. Um, ako po ay, in, in some parts, ay sumusuporta dito sa ordinancea ito. Bilang ina ng dalawang malit na bata, I strongly believe in the vaccination program. Uh, we've seen the effects of measles outbreak, uh, polio outbreak. Uh, pero there, I have some questions also po, ano na sana, mapagbigyan ako ng ating principal author to trash out some of the issues that I think will come out, uh, with this ordinance. Number one po, um, ang binabanggit niyo po dito is, uh, mandat, making it, um, prohibiting non-compliance dun sa mandatory basic immunization, uh, provided by Republic Act, um, what's this, 10152, tama po ba, uh, councillor Chua? And it only, it only mandates, um, basically, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight basic, uh, vaccinations, and then may colatila and some other vaccinations that would be required by the Department of Health. Um, pero we know, you, kasi your premise kanina when you were, um, discussing it, na, um, it exposes other children to, um, uh, infectious diseases. For example, um, one of the outbreaks na nangyari po, ano, was the Japanese encephalitis, the GI. It is not part of the mandated, um, vaccines. At, in fact, napakamahal ng GI vaccine. Um, hindi siya kasama, paano po pag 'yung magulang, wala siyang kakayanan? It, sa isang basic na, na clinic, I think, sa private clinic, it would cost around 1,500, pataas ang GI vaccine. Hindi kaya ng pamilya, dalawa, tatlo ang anak niya. Um, will that be, will that be covered under, um, this, uh, ordinance? Specifically, when an outbreak is ongoing? Or talagang limited lang po tayo dun sa, ano, sa, sa mandated ng...
Uh, I think limited lang tayo dito kasi nga, ito 'yung mga basic, muna na dapat magawa. Then, siguro in the future, we can add that.
Okay.
Pero at the meantime, ito 'yung pang importante, kasi ito 'yung mga common eh.
Yes, yun din po. Yan po talaga kasi ang pinaka-common na mga sakit ng bata.
Yes po.
Uh, 'yung Japanese encephalitis po na sinasabi po niyo, meron naman pong ratio 'yan eh, kung ilang lang ang tinataman. Halimbawa po, one is to 100 lang. So, ito po, very common po ito. So, 'yan po 'yung nakapaloob sa immunization program po ng, uh,
Department of Health.
Yes, at ng Pilipinas po. So, 'yan 'yung sa TB, kasi 'yung, uh, primary TB sa mga bata. Tapos, measles. 'Yan po kasi 'yung talagang may mga outbreak na pwedeng mangyari. So, 'yan po nakapaloob.
Thank you po. Another question po. Um, noong pinag-uusapan, 'yung, uh, na, sa, actually, I think, sa kongreso yun, na pinag-usapan, bakit nagkaroon ng mga problema sa vaccination programs? Um, may mga reasons po silang binanggit, no? One is, 'yung, 'yung fear of vaccination, especially being petaled by anti-vaxxers nowadays. Um, I was discussing it, uh, nga kanina with councillor Bagaching because, um, he was telling me of an experience with his daughter. But I, I also, just for the record, I also showed him the link, no? Um, where the United States Center for Disease Control and Prevention also already stated, there is no link between vaccines and autism. So, number one, yun po 'yung dapat natin. Number two, isa po sa mga binabanggit nila, particularly po for measles, kaya daw po nagkaproblema with, uh, 'yung sa outbreak is, 'yung pamilya, um, for one reason or another, not because of intentional, intent nilang hindi magpabakuna, pero dahil po una, um, walang, walang bantay sa bahay, hindi nila madala sa center ang mga anak, 'yung mga ganun po mga bagay, no? So ibig sabihin po, walang intent na ma-miss out 'yung mga vaccines. Um, curious lang po ako dahil dito po sa, sa ating ordinancea, meron pong penalty. Penalty of, a fine of 1,000 pesos or an imprisonment for a period of not exceeding two months. Um, uh, at pwede sila maging open talaga for a case. Dun sa RA 10152, um, wala pong penalty, uh, ang non-compliance. Uh, actually, it was specifically, um, amended to read, to take out the penalty provision of the previous law that provides for the mandatory vaccination. Um, dito po ba, kasama po 'yung mga walang intention, na hindi tal, out of neglect, pero hindi naman dahil ayaw nilang magpabakuna, dahil hindi sila naniniwala sa bakuna? Um, paano po 'yung mga ganung mga sitwasyon na, um, walang malis on their part, na hindi mapabakuna ang kanilang anak? Um, will they be still, um, be penalized under our ordinance? Yun lang po.
In those cases na wala naman talaga intention, maybe case-to-case basis, kailangan naman na lagyan ng penal, ano, ng ganitong clause, penalty. Kasi nga, sa mga nakaraang taon, may talagang mga parents or 'yung mga caretaker na talagang, as you have said, you mentioned mga ganung cases, now, hindi ganun ang nangyayari. Maybe, yun nga, 'yung laki information, maybe, talagang na lagyan lang to para maging mas aware 'yung mga parents and caretakers of those children, na talagang, how important is vaccine? Maybe, when it, when it comes to the cases that you have said a while ago, maybe, ano na lang, siguro, case-to-case. We'll see kung talaga bang may negligence in their part o talagang wala because, yun nga, na walang bantay o whatever, o may nagkaroon problema. So, i-ano na lang yun, uh, pag-ano na lang, pag-aralan ng health officers.
Konsihal, may problema po kasi dun sa statement na yun. This ordinance will be considered as a special law. Pag special law po kasi, hindi pinag-uusapan ng malis, pag special law, the mere act of not being vaccinated, whether it was their intent or not, they will already be liable. So, nawatanggal 'yung, natatanggal 'yung issue ng, in-intend mo ba o hindi? The fact na hindi mo napabakunahan dahil nung panahon ng bakunang period ng pagbabakuna, nagkasakit lahat ng pamilya mo, 'yung, kung meron man silang valid reason, it will be taken out from them because there's the penalty clause here. Special law removes malis in, um, in the act, no? So, siguro po, we can probably study further, consider rewarding or, or if would it be amenable na we delete the, the penalties? Particularly po on the imprisonment, no? Medyo baka mahirapan tayo dun sa, yun lang po 'yung aking personal na pananaw po sa ngayon. Pero, on the other matter of compelling or mandating, I believe that, um, one, one case endangers thousands. Polio here in the Philippines, one case became, uh, epidemic. At napakadelikado po, hindi lang para sa anak, ako kinuconsider ko kasi pag nabakunahan ko ang aking mga anak, hindi lang anak ko pinuprotektahan ko kundi 'yung mga anak ng mga iba pang mga nakakasama nila sa paligid nila. And I believe in this, I support this, we just need to study further. So, para naman po, hindi naman siya mas maging burden palalo dun sa mga nagkakaroon ng problema at kakayanan para matma-achieve ang ating intention. Salamat po.
Uh, sa akin po, na-mention na rin po, kasi ni, ito lang po opinion kong personal. Uh, total na-mention po ni Konsihal Abante Barquilla na pinuproteksyonan din po 'yung mga makakasama ng mga anak. Kasi puro po communicable diseases to. Ibig sabihin po ng communicable nakakahawa. So, hindi lang po ang, ang sarili niyong anak na pinuproteksyonan niyo, pati po 'yung mga makakasama po nila. Po ako po ang tatanungin, sa akin po, pabor po ako sa may penalty, bakit po? Sa ating pong lungsod, halos lahat po ng lugar sa ating lungsod, meron pong health center. Napakalapit po sa mga barangay. Meron po tayong mahigit-kumulang mga 60 health centers po na bukas araw-araw, 8 to 5. Meron po tayong lying in and, uh, lying in center sa bukas po 24/7. So, hindi po ako makaisip ng rason kung bakit po, sa hindi man sinasadyang, uh, dahilan, ay hindi po natin madadala ang ating pong, uh, mga anak sa mga health center. Kasi unang-una po, nandyan po lahat ng mga health center. Pangalawa po, libre po 'yung gamot, libre po 'yung bakuna. Kasi, kapag ganyan pong inisip natin, lagi na lang po natin iisipin, alam naman po niyo minsan, hanggang hindi po natatakot ang ating pong mga nasasakupan, hindi po sila gagalaw. Kapag meron na pong danger, saka lang po sila, uh, kumakaripas para tugunan po 'yung, uh, in fact, ngayon nga po, di ba, meron po tayong, uh, patak polio? Binabahay-bahay pa po ang ating pong mga, uh, bata na dapat nga po sila 'yung pumupunta sa ating mga health center eh. Pati po sa mga ospital. So, ako po hindi, hindi ko po makita 'yung, uh, hindi sina, hindi ko po makita 'yung ano na hindi nila sinasadyang, hindi mapabakunahan. Kasi pwede naman po laging habulin 'yung pagpapabakuna. Hindi pahuyan, uh, hindi pahuyan, uh, magte-take ng matagal na oras. Saglit pa saglit lang naman pong pagbabakuna. So, hindi po natin po pwedeng gawing rason na hindi po sinasadyang, hindi mapapag, mapabakunahan. In fact, meron pong mga bansa, ang alam ko po, ang Canada, ang US, na bago po sila tumanggap, tumanggap na mga, ma-migrate sa kanila po, hinihingi po ang records ng immunization. Doon po nagmamadili ngayon ng mga Pilipino na i-comply lahat, lahat po 'yan. So, sa akin po, actually, nung napag-usapan po namin 'yan sa Manila Health Department, ang isa pa nga po na sinasuggest po nila na sana na maisama dyan, sana maisama na hindi po tatanggapin sa ating mga daycare, ang ating pong mga bata kapag hindi po nabakunahan ng kompleto. Kasi puro bata rin po ang kasama nila eh. Sigurado po ako, kapag, uh, ang isa po ay tinamaan, halimbawa ng measles, ang lagi po natin ditong iniiwasan ay maging grabe 'yung mga, uh, ano ba tawag dito? Hindi lang po 'yung mismong measles, 'yung komplikasyon. Yun po ang talagang iniiwasan ng mga bakuna na ito. So, dahil nga po ito'y nakakahawa, minsan hindi naman natin alam, nasa atin na 'yung, uh, 'yung virus, kasi meron po 'yang ano eh, meron po 'yan na period na wala ka pang pinapakita ang mga simptomasi, pero nakakahawa ka na. 'Yung mga chickenpox, so yun lang sa akin po. Yun po ang aking personal na opinion. Yes, councillor Abante Barquilla?
Salamat po, at naintindihan ko po 'yung naging position niyo po, ma'am. At, um, siguro, ang panghuli ko na lang po nun, una, baka po pwedeng 'yung imprisonment, um, maging fine na lang siya total. Kung wala silang pambayad, it will become, um, imprisonment anyway. Number two, ho, I support adding that provision na 'yung daycare. Since it's a government, um, subsidized daycare, kailangan po vaccinate. Kasama siya sa magiging provision sa, kung pwede po siya ma-include dito sa ordinancea na to, na magiging requirement po siya.
Siguro, opo, tama po yun. Siguro 'yung sinasuggest din po ni Konsihal Lou Veloso, aside from, bago po natin mabakunahan, kung maggagawa po kayo na ordinancea, pagpasok din po sa daycare, dapat po meron silang hawak na, uh, kanila pong birth certificate. Kasi ang daycare po natin, karamihan pong mga two years old eh, pumapasok na po sa ating mga daycare. Meron tayong mga, parang halos lahat ng barangay may daycare eh. So, at least po, uh, aware tayo na kompleto po ang bakuna. 'Yung sinasabi na, 'yung nasa Expanded Program for Immunization, 'yung EPI, kompleto po 'yung, uh, bakuna po ng mga bata. Bago po kayo, councillor Louis Chua?
Actually, ba is 'yung sinabi, 'yung ordinance na hindi pwedeng pumasok. Actually, ginagawa ko na po 'yung ordinance na yun eh, na, do, para nga masunod talaga, is ayun way na i-force 'yung parents, napakuna kundi, their, their kids or their children will not be accepted sa daycare or any school because it is one of the requirement.
Hindi ba pwedeng isama na to dito?
Pwede rin, siguro.
Ano po ang, ano po ang, uh, inyong, uh, paningin, councillor Joel Chua? Hindi ho ba pwedeng i-add na lang dito, 'yung sinasabi, instead na ibang ordinancea pa, na hindi po, parang isa na po 'yung siguro sa penalty na uh, kailangan po, bago sila pumasok na ating mga daycare, ay kompleto na po at mapapakita nila 'yung kanilang, uh, record ng immunization? At least man lang, 'yung nasa Expanded Program of Immunization natin.
Pwede naman po isama dito dahil, uh, one subject matter lang naman yun eh. Ang ano naman dito is 'yung pagbabakuna eh. Uh, actually, yun nga 'yung isa sa mga gusto ko itanong dito kasi dahil, well, dito, maliwanag po dun sa penalties, pagka-private operated medical institution, ang mananagot po 'yung manager. Tapos, nakalagay po dito, uh, when the child is born or under the postnatal as well as duly licensed private physician, nurse, or midwife. Eh, dito po sa public hospital, sino po mananagot dito?
What do you mean, public hospital? Tayo po.
Hindi, sino po ba sa, halimbawa po, sa ating health center, sino po mananagot? 'Yung pinakadirektor po ba nun? Yung po bang, kasi kailangan medyo maliwanag po dito kasi, uh, ordinancea to eh, so maglalagay tayo ng penalty. Sinong pananagotin natin? Hindi mo na, hindi mo namam po pwedeng panagotin 'yung lying in center. Unang-una, hindi mo sila mapapakulong. Pangalawa, hindi mo sila mapipenalty. So, kailangan, 'yung tao. Di ba? Kasi nakalagay ito, it shall be unlawful for any hospital, health infirmary, health center, or lying in center. Eh, 'yan po, structure po 'yan eh. Ang dapat mananagot, it shall be unlawful for any hospital-like director o kung sino man po, kasi hindi ko po...
Uh, parang i-mas, ano natin, detalye.
Opo, na person responsible doon po sa pagpapanak. Tapos, pangalawa, pun tanong ko, eh, 'yung liability po ba nun? At 'yung liability ng parents, parehas?
Sige po, mamaya po pag-usapan natin sa period of amendments. Sino po na una? Councillor numero uno Lim. Sino po na una? Counselor numero uno Lim?
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I'd like to comment honorable Chua for the, for this ordinance, but I would also like to ask some questions, Your Honor, with regards to the data. If you have figure po, nung mga infants and children, na kailangan hong mabakunahan po ng agaran sa ating city, na kailangan hintong mandatory basic immunization program?
Counselor Luwitsua?
Hello. Ah, I don't have any data kung ilan 'yung mga hindi pa nabakunahan?
Ah, okay. Sa polio po, ito pong huling patak natin sa polio. 110%, actually, nag-exceed nga po tayo ng ating pong target, 110 point something percent po ang napatakann sa oral polio natin. Kasi meron talaga tayong drive against oral polio na uulitin po natin ulit ngayon. I think next week po uulitin natin 'yung third cycle ng pagpapatak ng oral polio. Pero 'yung sa iba po, wala pa po tayo yatang ano... Pero manghihingi po ako, sa Manila Health Department, kasi meron sila pong kopian ng ating pong... Yes po?
Your Honor, ah, Your Honor, ah, with regards po dun sa penalties, gusto ko lang hong ma-enlightened, ah, ma-enlightened with regards to the violations. Kunwari ho, na-nag-violate po ang isang magulang for the first offense, kasi medyo hindi ho clear. "Any person who violates the provision of this ordinance should be punished by a fine of 1,000 pesos or an imprisonment." So, kung sakali hong mag-violate, ano ho ba ang mag-aano ho dun? 'Yung 1,000 pesos o or an imprisonment for a period not exceeding 2 months? Siguro, ah, gusto ko sanang, kung maari, imbliso na maglagay ho tayo ng second offense, third offense, 'yung fourth to sana, yun ho 'yung imprisonment. Sana maging clear po doon. Ah, baka pwede ho ma-enlightened po, Your Honor?
Please take note of the manifestation, Counselor Chua?
Yeah, I think para mas clear, 1,000 first offense pa lang, di ba? Oo, para, ah, kasi nga, as you have said, Your Honor, a while ago, I agree with you na there's no way na ma-miss nila. Kasi wala naman tong schedule, pero mo, actually, the all the day, all the weeks, and all the months to go to the center. Kaya, ano ma excuse, alangan lamang isang buwan kang may sakito, isang buwan kang may kompromiso, o whatever. So, there's no way talaga ma-miss mo yun eh. Kasi nga sabi nga, pag gusto mo talaga, may paraan. Eh, pag talagang hindi mo inaano, finokus, eh, talagang mangyayari ganyan.
Kasi po pagka ipinanganak po ang bata, ang isa po sa mga unang ibinibilin sa mga magulang, sa nanay, sa mga lolo't lola, sa tatay, 'yung schedule ng immunization. Ah, 'yung iba nga dyan, normally, pagka-panganak pa lang, binabakunahan na ng BCG. 'Yung iba po talaga, ah, nakakalungkot man, sila mismo 'yung mga nanay ang umaayaw. Eh, ando ka na sa ospital eh, pwede ka ng bigyan nun eh, pero sila 'yung umaayaw. So, yun ang nakakaano. Tapos, pag nagkaroon na ng primary TV, 'yung TV ng mga bata, saka sila ngayon nagkakaproblema, di ba? Eh, nakakahawa po yun, hawa-hawa po 'yan eh. Yes, Counselor Uno Lim?
Your Honor, ah, ibig ho ba sabihin ito, ah, imbliso na imprisonment ho 'yung ilalagay? Gagawin na lang ho nating first offense, second offense, or third offense? Yung dito po ba, your unimprisonment, ah, ito ho ba ay a-amend, o ano ho ba? So, wala na ho bang imprisonment?
Siguro po pag-usapan natin mamaya, ah, 'yung during the amendments, magpapa-recess tayo para mapag-usapan po natin 'yung mga, 'yung penalty clause. Counselor, Lailani Marila Kuna?
Ah, maraming salamat po, Your Honor. Ah, katulad po nung sabi niyo kanina, ang Manila po eh napakaraming health centers, at ngunit marami po sa ating mga constituents sa bawat barangay. Eh, hindi pa po ah nalalaman ang kahalagahan ng bakuna sa kanilang mga anak. Ah, napakaswerte nga po dahil ang Manila Health Department, simula po last year, ang mga doktor po mismo ang bumababa sa barangay. Ang naging, nakita ko lang pong problema eh, ultimo po mga ibang chairman, eh, hindi po nila alam 'yung programang yun. Kaya po ang ating mga doktor eh nahirapan sa pagbaba at pagbakuna sa aming mga sinasakupa na barangay. Ah, gusto ko lang pong itanong sa author, kung pwede pong maisingit at kung paano po ang information dissemination po. Ah, pati po sana sa mga, ah, mga kapako mga barangay chairman, dahil katulad nga po nung sinabi ko eh, nahirapan po ang ating health officer at mga doktor sa pagbabakuna sa mga bata na kinakailangan na mga bakuna sa kanila. Thank you po.
Actually, kanina umaga lamang po, dahil napakalapit sa akin ang ating health officer, ako po ay sinabihan niya na last week pa po, bago pa po talaga pumutok ang balita nitong coronavirus, nag-i-information dissemination na po sila. So, 'yung ating pong mga health workers ay nagbabara barangay, sila po ay nagko-conduct na ng information dissemination patungkol po sa ating mga bakuna, at pati na rin po sa mga kailangang i-watch out para dun po sa, ah, lumalabas na problema ngayon patungkol sa coronavirus. Yes po?
Your Honor, gusto ko rin po sanang itanong, meron po bang pananagutan ang mga barangay chairman? Kung sakali pong bumaba ang mga doktor at hindi po namin iallow, or hindi namin maiba ba 'yung, or nagko-operate sa pagpapabakuna po sa mga aming nasasakupa na barangay?
Ako, kung ako po ang tatanungin yun, dapat ho. Kasi po nung nakaraang pagpapatak oral polio natin, talaga pong may mga mangilan-gilan na barangay officials na hindi po nakipag-cooperate.
Tama po 'yan.
Na kailangan pa po natin talagang kalampagin o balaan na sila po ay mananagot kapag hindi po sila nakipag-cooperate ng ano... Di ho ba sa isang, Consihal Laila Kuna? Di ho ba sa isang barangay ay meron pong humahawak ng nakagawad ng Committee on Health?
Yes po.
Di dapat po siya ho ang tututok dyan? Na make sure na lahat po ng mga bata... Meron naman silang mga ano niyan eh, meron silang record eh. May listahan sila, kung meron silang listahan ng mga senior citizen, dapat meron din silang listahan na mga bata na kompleto ang bakuna.
Tama po.
Di ba? So, ako po talaga, wala akong nakikitang dahilan para ho hindi makapag-comply dun po sa napapaluob ng Expanded Program of Immunization natin. Kasi dun pa lang po kumapapansin niyo, no? Dun pa lang po sa mga bakuna na yun, medyo maganda-ganda na pong proteksyon natin. Kasi nandun po talaga 'yung pinaka-common na mga sakit na po pwede pong makuha ng mga bata. Halimbawa, yang ano, primary TV, 'yan sa mga bata. Ah, measles, polio. Ngayon po, meron na rin lumalabas na pertusis at saka diptheria. Lahat po 'yan nakapaluob doon sa mga bakuna na ibinibigay po ng libre sa ating mga health center. So, wala talagang dahilan para, unless nga po, hindi tayo naniniwala ah sa epekto, o may iba po tayong paniniwala sa epekto po ng bakuna. Before we continue, recess is declared by the chair. Counselor Luisito Chua? Anong maingay? Ano ba 'yan?
Yes, Your Honor. Ah, a while ago, it was discussed with my other fellow counselors, and I think we need further study of this matter. And maybe we could consult other departments like the Department of Health.
Especially for the penalty clauses?
Yeah, especially for the penalty clause. And so, I think we defer it for further study.
Counselor, Majority Floor Leader?
Your Honor, I move that we defer the discussion of this draft ordinance prohibiting noncompliance with a mandatory basic immunization program for infants and children in the city of Manila, imposing penalties for violation thereof.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to defer further discussion, to give way to another committee hearing perhaps, and consultation with more experts with regard to immunization. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, in addition to that, Your Honor, may I request the Chairman of the Committee on Health to please also invite the representative of the City Legal Department with respect to the constitutionality or legal effect of this draft ordinance?
The City Legal, Manila Health Department, representatives from the Department of Health.
And the barangay.
And the barangays. And also from MDSW, kasi ah, isa siguro sa mga kinoconsider na at sa penalty clause 'yung sa mga enrolles natin ng daycare, which is under the Manila Department of Social Welfare.
And also representative from the DOH, Your Honor, considering that if this ordinance will be passed by the City Council, the national government located within the city of Manila, like Jose Reyes, will also be affected by this ordinance?
Tsaka 'yung WHO, World Health Organization.
Thank you po. With that, Your Honor, we will now proceed to item number 10, the proposed ordinance providing for a pet dog registration and monitoring system with mandatory anti-rabies vaccination for pet dogs in the city of Manila. Your Honor, may I request the Secretary to please read the report of the Committee on Health?
Mr. Secretary?
Upon the perusal of the proposed measure at hand, the committee has determined its main intent of establishing a system of monitoring pet dogs and prescribing compulsory vaccination with the end goal of protecting the public against rabies and dog-related injuries. The plan of raising the level of responsibility in raising and keeping pet dogs coupled with compulsory anti-rabies vaccination are in keeping with public safety as well as the constitutional policy of upholding the right of health of every individual. By keeping track of the basic whereabouts of household dogs through modern steps, including their inoculation status, the risk of related injuries is reduced. Rabies infection should never be taken lightly. Once untreated or inappropriately attended, it can lead to serious or fatal consequences. The city of Manila has its share of rabies infection in its community, which is still used as it is expensive to treat. Introducing a more... Introducing a more organized method to monitor household dogs would enhance the chance to mitigate rabies-related incidents. In this light merit is seen. In view of the foregoing, this committee interposes no objection and finds justification to recommend the approval of the proposed ordinance for second reading without prejudice to comments and recommendations that the committee laws may submit.
Your Honor, may I request the Principal Author, the Honorable Konseler from the 4th District, Luwito N. Chua be recognized by the Chair.
Konseler Doc Luwito Chua. Beterynaryo na rin kayo. Kala ako sa mga tao lang kayo eh.
At po ng humihinga. Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I stand before you in this august chamber, and with me is this proposed measure aimed at establishing a sense of shared responsibility in relation to ownership and maintenance of pet dogs in our beloved city, maybe also cats. Also in terms of safekeeping, their role in sanitation in the community and protection against rabies to serve the general welfare. I submitted this draft measure along with the intent of protecting people against stray dog attacks and bites, and the latter is self a cause of concern as far as rabies contamination is concerned. Many of us have pet dogs, but still a lot of our pets are either left out in the streets mostly unaccompanied, or worse, were involved in animal bites. By bringing our pet dogs to the system of monitoring through registration and microchip implanting for monitoring purposes, we can readily identify those pets and their owners with indication whether inoculation was done. And with the cooperation of barangay units, a more systemic approach towards monitoring and better safekeeping can be attained. With that, Your Honor, concurrence and support is implored. Maraming salamat po.
Konseler Joel Chua.
Your Honor, I move that we open the period of discussion and debate.
There's a motion to open the period of discussion and debate. Is there any objection? I see none. Motion is carried. Konseler Joel, JTV Villanueva.
Maraming salamat, Madam Chair. Unang-una po ay kinukongratulate ko ang aking matalik na kaibigan sa kanyang naisipang ordinasang ito. Bagamat, ako po ay mahilig din sa mga aso. Gusto ko lang hun, unang tanong ko po sa kanya, ito bang ordinasa ay eksklusib lamang sa aso at hindi kasama ang pusa?
As I've said, kasama din po ang mga pusa. Kasi in my practice in clinic, may mga, ang pusa kasi may rabies din yan eh, so it's also included.
Although very rare po ah, ang rabies po sa pusa. Ang alam ko po patidaga. Opo.
Patidaga.
Kaya lang wala naman po sigurong nag-aalaga ng daga.
Oo, nag-aalaga ng dagang bahay. Hindi ko lang ho mahuli. Pero nasa bahay ko po. Well, kung kasama po ang pusa, siguro may isama rin ho natin sa title at sa nilalaman ng ordinasa.
Yes, my friend. Basta ikaw. No problem.
Pangalawa ho, ang aking agam-agam lang dito sa Section 2, Letter B, ah, Letter A, na sinasabi po dito, now within the period of 15 days from the formulation of the implementing rules and regulations of this ordinance, all pet dogs belonging to residents of the City of Manila shall be, shall be presented to their BIB for registration with the assistance of the corresponding barangays, with subsequent registration every 3 months from the first day of registration. Thinkinyo ho kaya ay kakayanin ang personnel ng BIB na bumaba sa 896 barangays para i-undertake itong registration na ito considering na napakaraming aso sa isang barangay pa lamang ho. And every 3 months thereafter, we assume na yung 896 ay naristro, I assume na makakaroon ng continuity, no? Yung gagawin ng BIB sapagat every 3 months dun palang matatapos 'yung registration. So parang all year, all year round, eh, nakatutok ang mga BIB personnel sa pagi-register pa lang ng mga aso.
Ah, Your Honor, I think my friend has a point. Medyo kulang yung timeframe para sa registration ng mga dogs. And considering na, let's say we have about 1.780 million population, let's make it 1 is to 10, so maybe, so madami yun ano, so I think we can amend this period of time for the registration and monitoring of the dogs.
Siguro po registration sa barangay, tapos ang barangay nalang ang magsasamit po sa BIB. Ang question ko po Doc Luwii, ano po ang logic, bakit po every 3 months natin i-re-register ulit? Are this parang new registration or i-uuulitin natin ang registration ng mga naparegister na natin?
Hindi, hindi, hindi. I think there's, yeah, you have a pointer, Your Honor. Basta ma-register lang yung dogs o anytime?
Opo. So once lang, basta mapa-register?
Yes.
Your Honor, baka ho siguro, mga dagdag ako'y sinabi ni Doc Luwii, baka ang intensyon nito o rational behind it is every 3 months, baka, siyempre, baka yung.
Bagong ano.
Nanganak.
Oo.
Ayun nga, nanganak iba yun. Alam niyo naman ang aso, napakabilis dumami nito.
Siguro ang, sorry po, siguro po i-gawi nalang compulsory na kapag may bagong ano, ipapa-register, pero hindi naman tayo magbibigay ng timeframe na every 3 months.
Yes, yes.
Na kailangan eh ipapa-register natin. So dapat automatic po pagka may mga, tandaan niyo po, may kasabihan nga na mas ma, mas matapang po ang, mas rabid po ang mga tutak. Wala nga daw hubong ano, asong nauulol na, walang tutang nauulol, tama ba yun? Aso na, aso lang, oo. Hindi ko alam kung anong ibig sabi nun, pero lagi sinasabi yun eh. Okay, so mas maganda po talaga kapag tutak pa lang, yung complete vaccination, may ano naman yan eh, meron niyang, meron din po yang, ano eh, schedule of vaccination.
Tama po yung binanggit ninyo, Madam Chair, at ito'y open book na ang ama ng hari ng Pelikulang Pilipino na si FPS o si Fernando po Senior ay namatay dahil sa kagat ng alaga niyang tutak. Okay, kaya ho, tama po yun. Isa pa hong katanungan, sa Letter B po ng Section 2 ng proposed ordinance, nakalagay dito, an electronic, electronic tag shall be implanted by the BIB to every registered pet dog. Ah, ano ho ba yung itsura't klase nung electronic tag na to? I-i-implant dun sa aso mismo, ah, para ho ba tong SIM card o, paano ho ito'y i-undertake?
Pag tinawagan mo, pag tinawag may aso susunod na sa'yo.
Oh, ah, matitetek mo ba siya parang ah, ah, ang tawag GPS, kapag na-implant ba ito, inahanap mo yung aso mo nasa ilalim ng kama, makokonek ba ito sa cellphone?
Parang sa ibang bansa yata kasi may ganyan na, pero dito po parang wala pa eh. Meron na ba yung iba? Yes po, Konseler Doc Luwito Chua.
Yes, Your Honor, to answer my good friend from District 4, actually, it's a microchip, na it's like a size of a grain that would be implanted to the dog. And the gooey with this implant, it doesn't move because of a polymer substance within it. Actually, may sample po ako niyan, Madam, eto po yun, no?
Pwede niyo bang isample sa akin yan?
Pwede ko mamaya pa testing kay DJ. Mamaya sa badok nga eh, lalagay ko.
Oo, pwede. Tingnan nga natin, sige, kung effective.
Siguro po kay DJ po, may, may sample po natin kay Consel DJ yan.
Yan ba ay readily available sa ating pong BIB?
Hindi, we will be, will available it. Actually, tapos eto po yung scan.
Ano naman po yan?
Eto yung.
Talagang beterynaryo na kayo ngayon ah?
Somehow, somehow, eto yung parang, kasi may ano to, i-scan.
Okay.
Malalaman ngayon lahat ng data about the dog, kung sino owner niya, kung kompleto ba kunan niya, kasi ang mga, ang mga dogs, ang mga pets, they should be, have anti-rabies every year.
Yes.
So ngayon, pag nag-pen, pag ah, nag skip siya, malalaman natin. So, para magi, kasi ang rabies nga mahirap, no? Alam natin as doctors na pag isang tao na ano, chance to survival medyo slim.
Wala na nga, halos.
Yes, that's true. That's why I think this is very important para minimize natin mga, ano, mga zero rabies ang ating, ang ating City.
Yan ho ba ay available sa mercado, sa mga private clinics?
Opo.
Pet clinics?
Opo. Actually, um, eto po ay.
Binibenta ba niyo yan?
Ano po?
Binibenta.
Hindi, hindi, o, nagbebenta. May nagbebenta, not me. Okay, anyway, sabi no supplier, ah, they can supply us with these microchips. Now, ang, tapos ang mag-aano, ang BIB at saka City Pound, may libre silang dalawang tong scanners para let's say may stray dog, may scan nila kaagad, tapos may sosol nila sa owner, yung dog kung kanino man yun, tsaka malalaman lahat about the dog, kung kompleto ba kunan, mga ganong bang bagay.
Isang klase lang bahuyan?
Isa lang.
All kinds of dogs?
All kinds of dogs.
How about cats?
Pati cats kasama na.
Libre advertisement pa yan ah?
Gusto mo makita. Ito yun, no? Picture mo.
May iba pa hong katanungan, Consel JTV, talagang pinaghandaan mo si Doc Luwii ah?
Opo, eh, kasi ho, lagi rin ho siyang nagahanda sa akin, ako naman ho ngayon. Napansin ko po dito sa penalties, any person who violates the provision of this ordinance shall be penalized as follows. For the first offense, a fine of 1,000 pesos. Eh, hindi ho kaya antay po rito?
Ikaw nga ang antay po eh.
Hindi po, kasi kaya ako natanong, kasi binabanggit ho dito, failure on the part of the owner to present to BIB the administration of the anti-rabies vaccine. Eh, alam niyo naman ho, karamihan po sa mga depressed area, basta mag-aalaga lang sila ng aso. Ngayon, if, kung walang schedule sa barangay nila at sinasabing kailangan obligasyonin yung dalinto sa BIB, hindi nila alam kung saan pupuntahan yung opisya ng BIB, eh, makakaligtahan nila, no? Kaya ho, dahil hindi nila nagawa, dahil hindi sila sumuno dito sa ordinasa, eh, mapenalize na agad sila ng 1,000 pesos. Eh, baka ho sumama ang loob nito, Doc.
Ah, actually, Your Honor, ang ano to, yung microchips na to, napakamura, at yung anti-rabies libre, libre ang anti-rabies eh, sa BIP, all they have to do, parang yung sa vaccine nga, sa mail centers.
Tama.
They have just to go there.
Responsible pet ownership.
Tama siya.
Ang gusto pong i-propagate ni.
Yes, yun.
May kasama pa rin advertisement.
Yes, oh, you see? Ngayon yun, so, may anti-rabies na, tapos ah.
May microchip ka?
May microchip pa, ma-monitor, ma-organize natin yung mga aso natin. Maiwasan di yung ano, yung, yung ano, yung mga dumedification, di ba, meron tayong magkakaroon po ng mga serification?
Yes.
So, lahat yun, ma, masosol with this kind of system. At yung, ang pinakaano nga doon, kidding aside, talagang ang pinaka purpose neto, yung maiwasan yung isang tao magkaroon ng rabies. Kasi nga, as you have said, Madam Chair, a while ago, pag ang tao nagkaroon ng rabies, ah, halos, there's no chance for him or her to survive. So that's one thing of, not good with this kind of system to prevent, at kasi sa totoo lang, madaming pet owners sad to say, they are not responsible. Gusto lang namang magkaroon ng aso, pero yung sense of responsibility, wala dahil.
Tama.
Yun nga, hindi nila nasusunod yung anti-rabies surely, o eh, kung walang certain na body o system na pagmo-monitor neto, parati na lang ganong mangyayari. So kagandahan neto na pangangalagaan natin yung kaligtasan ang buhay ng bawat manilenyo.
Tama po.
This is very important na maipasa natin sa I'm College, my fellow counselors, to support this kind of ordinance para din sa ating lahat to, kasi nga, ang rabies ay talagang very fatal. Parang pag nakagat ka, parang magkaroon ka ng cancer na anytime you can die.
Subukan po yung ano, mag field trip sa San Lhasaro at saka sa RITM, sa outpatient department pa lamang po, makikitanan niyo, kasi meron po silang pinapalabas dun eh, na yung mga mangyayari kapag kayo po ay nakagat ng aso na hindi nabakunahan. Kasi meron din po kasi dyan, pagka kayo binakunahan, ah, isa po sa mga tanong dyan, kung yung nakakagat po sa inyong aso ay may anti-rabies vaccine o wala. Kasi iba-iba po yung, iba yung dosage, tsaka kung saan po kayo nakagat, kasi pagka nasa taas na po ng, sa pataas, taas na po, mas delikado kasi malapit na po sa utak. Yes, Konseler Joel Chua.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman, gusto ko lang pun tanungin yung ating pong Principal Author, may idea po ba siya kung gaano po karami yung pusa at saka aso sa lungsod ng Manila? Sabi lang.
Hello, parang di ko na, si JTV kasi.
May idea po ba kayo kung gaano po karami yung, yung aso at saka pusa sa lungsod ng Manila?
Hello, as I've said a while ago, assuming we have about 1,780,000 population in Manila, sa Manila lang ah, so assuming 1 out of 10 merong aso, so yun ang computation ko na ganong kadami ang aso sa ating Manila.
At yun din ang kagandahan na magpapa-register ka.
Yes.
At makakaroon ka ng census, kung ilan po ang ating mga aso.
Kaya ako po tinanong yan, dahil preparation po yun sa mga susunod gong tanong, dahil ang pangalawa ko pun tanong, eh, kasi may nilagay po tayo dito sa appropriation na 8.9. Sa Section 5, sa appropriation, ang susunod ko pun tanong, ano po na ginbasis natin sa 8.9 million pesos na appropriation? Kasi sinasabi po natin na ito po libre, tama po bang pagkakaintindi ko, na ito pong ipapasok po na electronic tag ay libre, tama po ba?
Hello, ah, hindi po libre to.
Di ba tayo magpa-check nung ano, electronic tag? So bibilhin po ng ating pamahalaan, pero ibibigay natin ang libre, tama ho ba? Hindi rin.
Ay.
Madi siya compulsory?
Kasi nakalagay po dito for the purpose of acquisition of the electronic tags, eh, hindi naman po natin po pwedeng.
Before we continue, recess declared by the Chair.
Nawawala tong ano.
Muri, ubo pa muna natin ah. Ubo pa muna natin. Ha? Kasi naglagay ka na appropriation, dapat ma... Counselor Doc Luisito Chua.
Yes, Your Honor. Uh, regarding the issue of 'yung appropriation at sa kumpano, 'yung method and other processes. Uh, I saw, I, I do for manifest na defer muna natin. For further, ano, about the appropriation asked by our majority floor leader.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chair, siguro idagdag na rin niya sa ikokonseder niya. Kasi susunod ko pun tanong, kung magkakano naman 'yung microchips? Kung ito ba ay kaya or affordable dun sa mga constituent natin, kagaya sa amin po, sa parola. Sa mga depressed area, may mga aso rin po dun. Eh, sinama pa po ni JTB 'yung pusat, so...
At saka kung ano po, kung pababayan po natin, kung pababayaran po natin 'yung chips. Kasi nakalagay po sa ordinancea na kailangan, meron silang chips eh.
Tama.
So, hindi po 'yan... Kung baka hindi, baka hindi po lahat makaka-affordable.
Kaya kailangan, may status tayo. Kaya kailangan, we have the complete data para kung tayo man ang sasagot, 'yung City of Manila. 'Yung i-appropriate po natin, eh, enough, kasi di re-require natin 'yung buong Manila eh. Tapos hindi naman natin, kasi ang inappropriate natin, baka mamaya kulang. So sasabihin ng iba, pag naipasa natin 'to, eh, hindi naman naming kasalanan eh. Bakit niyo kami ipenalize, samantalang wala na kayo mai-provide ng microchips.
Oo nga, dapat ma, maano natin pati 'yung mga, 'yung mga pos, ano ba 'yung mga...
Kaya ang purpose ni, yeah, I, I do believe, with the majority floor, I agree with him na ito nga, magkaroon tayong appreciation, appropriation. Ang government para sa tao nga, para ma-organize nga natin 'yung, at mo-monitor nga natin 'yung mga aso natin.
Siguro pa pagka, 'yung further, um, study dito, you, you can consider inviting also 'yung, uh... Meron 'yang ano eh, grupo, 'yung, uh, association of mga veterinary, veterinarians, tapos 'yung pos. 'Yung mga, ano, pagka nag-kumitihirin po tayo ulit.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Lubiloso, bago po natin defer?
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, di ko po masyadong makuha kasi, um... Ang aso po, pa, kahit naka, nag, nag, merong injection ng anti-rabies, uh, pag nakakagat, ang nakagat ay magpapa-inject.
Yes.
Matumatip po 'yun.
Magpapabakuna pa rin po.
So with this po, uh, hindi na po ba?
Magpapabakuna pa rin po.
Magpapabakuna pa rin.
Opo, magpapabakuna pa rin po. Ang lagi po, kasi meron po 'yung mga komplika-komplikasyon eh. At kung ano pong, uh, bakuna ang ibinibigay, depende po nga 'yan kung, uh, nabakunahan 'yung nakakagat sa inyo.
Kasi, kasi po, lately...
Pag nakagat po kayo ng, uh, taong may rabies.
Lately po, kasi...
Pwede rin po 'yun.
Madam Chair, uh, 'yung aso ko po nakakagat ng, uh, ng tao, eh, may injection na po 'yun. Uh, so, 'yung tao, nasa, dahil sa takot niya, uh, nagpa-inject po ng, uh, anti-teta no, tapos 'yung anti-rabies.
Opo, kasi meron po nga 'yan, depende kung saan kayo nakagat. Kung nakakagat po kayo ng merong bakuna na 'yung aso, depende po 'yan sa ibibigay na bakuna sa inyo.
Thank you po.
Uh, para po sa kaalaman ng lahat, ang ating tong, uh, department, uh, section ng Animal Bites, sa baba. Sa ground floor po, under Manila Health Department, ay nagbabakuna po ng libre sa mga nakakagat po. Kasi sa San Lhasaro, may bayad po 'yan. Dito po sa atin, libre po 'yan, hanggang may available po na supply ng, uh, bakuna para sa mga nakakagat. Dyan po sa Animal Bite Center po natin. Dito po, sa baba, meron din po tayong Animal Bite Center, sa Santa Ana Hospital. At kung hindi pa ako nagkakamali, sa Lanusa Health Center. Yes po, Counselor Princess Abante Martia.
Maraming salamat po, I think ang pinaka-intention nitong ordinance, nito, 'yung responsible pet ownership, no? Um, ako po, meron pong akong isa ring ibabanggit na maaring nakakaligtaan dun sa issue ng responsible pet ownership. Dito po sa atin, madalasan, pag may, pag may alaga ka, paanak ka ng paanak, parami ng parami. Isa po sa mga hindi natin napapansin, maliban dun sa anti-rabies injections, pet, um, registration. 'Yun po sana ng, um, spay and, um, neuter na mga alaga, para hindi na sila dumadami. Uh, wala ka palang panggastos ng pang-anti-rabies, wala kang panggastos ng pagkain, nakakalat sila kung saan-saan. Um, kaya po, dito po ako papasok na, siguro po dun sa aspeto nong, um, pagpo-provide libre, may bayad. Isa sa, pwede kong i-suggest later on po, as kong pag-aaralan pa further. Unang-unang po, um, pwede po siguro, the first two, first three libre, pero kung meron kang sampung alaga dahil, eh, pinagpaparami ka. 'Yung mga susunod, eh, may bayad na. Part of responsible pet ownership. Um, number two po, na maybe we can also focus on the spaying and neutering of the pets. Para po hindi dumadami, at kadalasan po, 'yung hindi na, 'yung hindi kaya ng pamilya, nilalabas na lang. 'Yun po 'yung mga nakastray, sila po 'yung nakakagat, wala pong nag-aalaga, wala pong nagre-register, at wala pong nag, nagche-check kung sila po ay nababakunahan. Um, ako po ay...
Pet owner.
Pet owner din po ako, meron po akong, uh, anim na aso sa bahay. Uh, lahat po sila ngayon ay neutered na, um, at regular po ang kanilang mga bakuna. 'Yun din po siguro 'yung dapat natin ma-focus, hindi lang po 'yung anti-rabies, pero 'yung pagpapatigil po ng mga... Hindi ka naman breeder eh, in fact, kung breeder ka, dapat may lisensya ka. Uh, magpaspe, magpaspe at neuter po ng ating mga alaga.
Tama po 'yun. So with that, Counselor Ricky Boy, Isip.
Your Honor, maraming salamat po.
Di pa kayo nagugutom ah?
Opo, mabis lang po. Naniniwala po ko na, ang, ang purpose po nung ordinance ang ito is, number one, 'yung sa proteksyon po ng taong bayan. Na kumababakunahan lahat, eh, may proteksyon po. Uh, kanina po, Vice nabanggit niyo po, Your Honor, 'yung patungkol sa daga. Bigla pong sumagot sa isip ko, 'yung mga, sa elementary schools, tuwing labasan po. Meron dyan marami pong mga nagbebenta ng mga babunot, 'yung mga dagang costa po. Uh, ito ba, eh, subject din po ba 'to, maari rin po ba silang magkaroon ng, ng rabies? Eh, ang ano po, kasi wala nagko-control po sa kanila, at ang karamihan po na kanilang mga customer. Eh, mga minobidat, mga bata po, na may tendency po na malagay po sa peligro. Kung 'yung mga alagang binibenta pong daga na 'yan, eh, macontaminate po ng rabies.
Opo 'yan, dapat kasama din 'yun.
'Yun laman po, Your Honor.
So with that, Counselor Joel Chua, marami pa po tayong pag-uusapan.
Your Honor, I move that we defer item number 10.
There's a motion to defer item number 10, is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried. Item number 11.
We are now on item number 11, Your Honor, for third reading draft ordinance, number 8053. An ordinance further amending city ordinance number 6511, as amended by city ordinance number 7971. Entitled an ordinance prohibiting the defacing by painting, writing, scribbling, scrolling, drawing, smearing, coloring, stamping, or inscribing of walls, sidings, partitions, fences, gates, doors, or windows, paints of buildings, edifices, houses, or structures, whether public or private or of lamp posts, street signs, street sidewalks, or other public property, with certain exceptions and providing penalty for violation thereof and for other purposes. Your Honor, this draft ordinance was published in Malaya on June 9, 2020, and Abante on January 11, 2020. Both newspapers of general circulation. The Committee on Laws has submitted its report on the matter. Your Honor, I move that we approve for third and final reading draft ordinance number 8053.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to approve for third and final reading, an ordinance further amending city ordinance number 6511, as amended by city ordinance number 7971. Entitled an ordinance prohibiting the defacing by painting, writing, scribbling, scrolling, drawing, smearing, coloring, stamping, or inscribing of walls, sidings, partitions, fences, gates, or window paints of buildings, edifices, houses, or structures, whether public or private of lamp posts, street signs, streets, sidewalks, or other public properties, with certain exceptions and providing penalties, penalty for violation thereof and for other purposes. Is there any...
Second to the motion, seconded by Counselor Nueva Fajardo Janisio Ong Lim Sia Tan Edward Robles Dallos Benaventura Kimpo Nieto Rodriguez Bogosa Pasqual Laxson Luisito Chua Bagat Sing Bakani Reyes Borromeo Hison Isip Reyes Ortega Lacuna Leilani Marie Belloso Abante Martia Lacuna Salvador Philip and Uy, is there any objection? I see none, said, ordinance is now approved for third and final reading and for publication. Next.
Your Honor, we are now on item number eight, other matters. Uh, for unassigned business, Your Honor, I move that we suspend the rules.
There's a motion to suspend the rules, is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried, rules are now suspended.
Your Honor, we have here, Your Honor, a resolution expressing most profound sympathies to the family of the late musical icon Dennis Garcia over the recent passing of the co-founder of legendary pioneer band Hot Dog. In honor of his important legacy, significant contribution, and lasting impact in modern Filipino culture and music, especially in the city of Manila. Your Honor, may request the Secretary to please read the dispositive portion of the said draft resolution.
Dispositive na lang.
Okay. Now therefore, it resolved by the 11th Manila City Council to convey its deepest condolences to the family and friends of the late musical icon Dennis Garcia, co-founding pioneer of legendary band Hot Dog. On his recent passing, in honor of his significant contribution, lasting impact, and important legacy in the modern music and culture of the Filipino, especially in the city of Manila. Please ensure further the copies of the resolution be forwarded to the majid family of Dennis Garcia, as well as to his eldest brother Greg Garcia of the Basis Conversion and Development Authority, and to PhilScap or the Philippine Society of Composers, Authors, and Publishers.
Your Honor, may, may request the principal author, Honorable Don Juan DJ Bagating be recognized.
Honorable Don Juan DJ Bagating, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think this is a simple yet a very symbolic measure. And, uh, and I believe that our honorable mayor also sought this out because, uh, we really have to recognize the contribution of a hot dog band to the city of Manila. And as we, not just to the city, but to the whole country, because if we remember last month or last year, the Sea Games. The Philippines was united, the athletes and those watching the television, because they paraded with the song Manila Manila. And even if there were some who were against it, those are just isolated cases. But, uh, aside from Manila, they also sang, uh, the other hits like, uh, Ikaw Ang Miss Universe ng Buhay Ko. Pinoy it ko kay Vice Mayor dahil, uh, Mukhang Miss Universe, Vice Mayor.
Ganun.
And the First Love and Bebuti nga, Bongka Kaday. But before I end and ask for your support of this measure, let me just read the important lines of that song Manila Manila, which says, Hinahanap Hanap kita Manila, ang ingay mo ay kaysarap sa tenga. Mga jeepney mong nagliliparan, mga babae mong nagagandahan. Take me back to your arms Manila, and promise that you'll never let me go. That encompasses the character of the city of Manila. And all over the world, kilala ang Manila bilang Pilipinas, at hinahanap hanap ng mga Pilipinas. So let's honor the founder of the band and the writer of the song, which will be forever immortalized. Even if he's gone, Manila will always benefit from that huge, huge hit song. So take care, Your Honor.
With that...
Your Honor, I move that we dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment.
There's a motion to dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendments, unless may gustong kumontra. Is there any objection?
Hot Dog.
I see none, motion is carried.
Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, I move that we approve the resolution expressing most profound sympathies to the family of the late musical icon Dennis Garcia over the recent passing of the co-founder of legendary pioneer band Hot Dog. In honor of his important legacy, significant contribution, and lasting impact in modern Filipino culture and music, especially in the city of Manila.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to approve a resolution expressing most profound sympathies to the family of the late musical icon Dennis Garcia over the recent passing of the co-founder of legendary pioneer band Hot Dog. In honor of his important legacy, significant contribution, and lasting impact in modern Filipino culture and music, especially in the city of Manila. Is there any second to the motion? Seconded by Counselor Fajardo Janisio Nueva Ong Lim Sia Laxson Tan Edward Robles Dallos Benaventura Kimpo Nieto Rodriguez Bogosa Pasqual Bakani Bilianueva Luisito Chua Reyes Ortega Isip Hison Borromeo Lacuna Leilani Marie Belloso Abante Martia Lacuna Salvador Philip Par and Uy, is there any objection? I see none, said, the resolution is now approved.
Next. We have here another resolution granting the application for special use permit for the issuance of business permit of value of peace funeral services located at 614 Estivera Street, Tondo, Manila. Your Honor, I move that we dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment.
There's a motion to dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendments, is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the resolution granting the application for special use permit for the issuance of business permit of value of peace funeral services located at 614 Estivera Street, Tondo, Manila.
There's a motion to approve a resolution granting the application for a special use permit for the... for a special use permit for the issuance of business permit of Valley of Peace Funeral Services located at 614 Est. De Vera Street, Tondo, Manila. Is there any objection? I see none. Said the solution is now approved. Para mabilis.
Another resolution, Your Honor, resolution declaring those portion of barang... declaring barangay 211, Zone 19, in the Second District, which were raised by fire on January 22, 2020, as calamity area. Your Honor, I move that we dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment.
There's a motion to dispense with the period of discussion, de... Ang gulo niyo ha? 210 ha, kay Chairman. Chair. Bata mo yun, mahakiya. Okay. Social mission, gulo niyo ha?
I withdraw my previous motion, and instead, Your Honor, I move that we dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment with respect to resolution declaring those portion, declaring barangay 210, Zone 19, in the Second District, which were raised by fire on January 22, 2020, as calamity area.
There's a motion to dispense. Resess is declared by the chair. Sino ba ang bumawa na resolution?
Your Honor, ang gulo ng mga konsihala sa district.
Tama.
Your Honor, I move to withdraw my previous motion.
There's a motion to withdraw the previous motion. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, I move to dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment with respect to resolution declaring barangay 210, Zone 19, in the Second District, which were raised by fire...
Which was?
Which was raised by fire on January 23, 2020, as calamity area.
There's a mo... An ba din-dispense mo ba? There's a motion to dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendments. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Dalawa kasi nakalagay din dito na barangay eh. Your Honor, I move that we approve resolution declaring barangay 210, Zone 19, in the Second District, Manila, which was raised by fire on January 23, 2020, as calamity area.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to approve a resolution declaring barangay 210, Zone 19, in the Second District of Manila, which was raised by fire on January 23, 2020, as calamity area. Is there any objection? I see none. Said the solution is now approved. Next.
Another resolution, Your Honor, resolution authorizing the City Government of Manila, represented by His Honor Mayor Francisco Isco Moreno do Magoso, to enter into a sister-city relationship agreement with the city of Tagupan, Province of Pangasinan, represented by His Honor Mayor Mark Brian C. Lim to foster and promote exchanges in various fields of endeavor. Your Honor, I move that we dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment.
Paki-recognize muna yung author nasa likuran.
Ma'am.
Oo, pagsalitain mo na. Hindi, bago ka mag-dispense.
Your Honor, I withdraw my motion, Your Honor. Your Honor, may I request the principal author, the Honorable Councillor from the... from the Second District, Honorable Materesa F. Benaventura Kimpo, be recognized.
Councillor, Tita Jen, Benaventura Kimpo, you have the floor.
Ah, magandang-magandang umaga po sa ating lahat. Marami pong salamat, kagalang-galang Vice Mayor Hany, Lacuna, at sa lahat po ng konsihala na nasangguni ang panlunsod. Ako po ay maghahain ng isang resolusyon bilang pagtugon mula sa isang kahilingan ni kagalang-galang Mark Brian C. Lim, punong lunsod ang Dagupan dalawigan ng Pangasinan. Sa kanilang talumpati noong Lunes sa flag raising ceremony, nang kanyang inilahad ang lubos sa paghanga niya sa ating alkalde, Francisco Isco Moreno do Magoso, sa mahusay at magaling na pamumuno, at ginawa niyang pagbabagong bihi sa ating minamahal na lunsod ng Maynila. Sa talumpati po ni kagalang-galang Mark Brian Lim, ay kanya pong inilahad sa madla ang kanyang kahilingan kay Mayor Isco na magkaroon po ng sister-city relationship. Ang dalawang lunsod at sa pamamagitan nito, ay maitayo ang isang magandang ugnayan at pagpapalitan ng idea, mungkahe at solusyon para sa pagsasaayos at ikauunlad ng bawat lunsod sa pamamalas ng mabuting pamumuno at pamamahala para sa maayos, mapayapa, at malinis sa pamahayan.
Konsihala, pwede dito po kayo, medyo madilim po kayo, dito po kayo. Tuloy na lang po niyo. Yun lang po. Ay, tapos na po ako. Pumidi yata tayo ngayon ha? Di na po, okay na po yun.
Salamat po.
Okay. With that, diyan muna po kayo, baka magpapasalamat po ka, pa kayo ma.
Your Honor, I move that we open the period of discussion and debate.
There's a motion, wala naman yata magtatanong na.
Si Konsial Uno.
Ah, okay. There's a motion to open the period of discussion, debate. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, I'd just like to be enlightened with regards to the sister-city agreement. Di ho ba pag-sister-city kailangan ka-level ho ng ating syudad?
Meron pong mga specific na...
May specific ho ba?
Oo, may mga... Dapat po parehong kapitolyo. I think kapitolyo... Kapitolyo bang Dagupan ng Pangasinan?
Alam ko po, meron po tayo rin in...
At saka...
Pag mga twining o...
Yes, tama po kayo diyan.
Do we have to check if this is sister-city or twining? Kasi kailangan ka-level ho ata ng city kapag sister-city.
Ang Dagupan ba'y city?
Yeah.
Highly urbanized, so okay po yun. Okay po yung sister-city kasi highly urbanized po. With that...
With that, Your Honor, I move that we close the period of discussion and debate.
There's a motion to close the period of discussion, debate. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
I move that we dispense with the period of amendment.
There's a motion to dispense with the period of amendments. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the City Government of Manila, represented by His Honor Mayor Francisco Isco Moreno do Magoso, to enter into a sister-city relationship agreement with the city of Tagupan, Province of Sang... of Pangasinan, represented by His Honor Mayor Mark Brian C. Lim, to foster and promote exchanges in various fields of endeavor.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to approve a resolution authorizing the City Government of Manila, represented by His Honor Mayor Francisco Isco Moreno do Magoso, to enter into a sister-city relationship agreement with the city of Tagupan, Province of Pangasinan, represented by His Honor Mayor Mark Brian C. Lim to foster and promote exchanges in various fields of endeavor. Is there any second to the motion? Seconded by Councillor Nueva Fajardo, Jonicio, Ong, Lim numero uno, Sia, Laxson, Tan Edward, Robles Dallos, Nieto Rodriguez, Magoso Pascual, Bagat Sing, Bakani, Reyes, Villanueva, Luisito Chua, Boromeo, Hison, Isip, Reyes Ortega, Lacuna Salvador Philip, Abante Barquia, Beloso, Lacuna, Leylani Marie, Uy, and Par. Is there any objection? I see none. Said the solution is now approved. Councillor Benaventura Kimpo.
Ah, maraming-maraming salamat po sa ating lahat, sa inyo po, at Mam Hany, maraming-maraming salamat.
Maari lamang pong bigyan natin ang CP ang alkalde ng Dagupan, Pangasinan, Mayor Brian Lim. So with that...
Your Honor, I would just like to make a manifestation, and, Your Honor, this is with respect to item number nine, the proposed ordinance prohibiting non-compliance with the mandatory basic immunization program for infants and children in the city of Manila, as well as item number 10. Your Honor, the proposed ordinance providing for a pet dog registration and monitoring system with mandatory anti-rabies vaccination for pet dogs in the city of Manila. It appears, Your Honor, that both ordinances will be, will not be tackled today and in the next scheduled regular session. And therefore, Your Honor, I move that instead of deferring, we... I move for the lay... I move that both ordinances be laid on the table.
There's a motion to lay on the table item nine and 10, and probably refer back to the...
To the respective committees.
To the respective committees. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, considering that, ano...
Meron pa rin.
Sorry, Your Honor. This is with respect to the second reading of the draft ordinance amending section seven of ordinance number 3358. Your Honor, may request the Secretary to please read the content of the committee report.
There's a motion... Sorry, Mr. Secretary.
Committee report from the Committee on Laws. After due deliberation and perusal on the existing ordinance and other necessary documents, this committee interposes no objection or opposition on said endorsement as well as with attached draft ordinance. It therefore recommends that this proposed draft ordinance be submitted for second reading for further deliberations by the City Council in its plenary session.
Depera lang yan.
Your Honor, I move that we dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendment.
There's a motion to dispense with the period of discussion, debate, and amendments. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, I move that we approve for second reading draft ordinance amending section seven of ordinance number 3358.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to approve for second reading draft ordinance amending section seven of ordinance number 3358. Is there any objection? I see none. Said motion is carried.
One minute, please.
Resess is declared by the chair.
Your Honor, I move that we approve for third and final reading and for publication draft ordinance amending...
Resess is declared by the chair.
Your Honor, considering that our rules are suspended, Your Honor, I move that we approve for third and final reading and for publication draft ordinance amending section seven of ordinance number 3358.
There's a motion presented by the Majority Floor Leader to approve for third and final reading and for publication, an ordinance amending section seven of ordinance number 3358. Is there any objection? I see none. Said ordinance is now approved for third and final reading and for publication.
Your Honor, considering that there are no more items in the agenda, Your Honor, I move for the lifting of the suspension of the rules.
There's a motion to lift the suspension of the rules. Is there any objection? I see none, motion is carried.
Your Honor, I move to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Session adjourn. Salamat.